The December 9, 2019 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Let us break. As Christ has happened to follow, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can meet September 9 for our Planning Board meeting. Lord just be with us as we review all the cases being presented to us, give us the strength, the wisdom, and knowledge that we'll make decisions beneficial to the citizens of Rockingham County and also the requesting parties. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
At this time, the Board is going to vote on approval of minutes for last meeting of September 9, October 14, and October 28.
Paul, I think you have to continue the others. Whatever minutes are in your packet is what you'll vote on tonight.
Just those?
Yeah, I think there's just the one from November 12. And then continue the others to the next meeting.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the November 12, 2019 meeting as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding Board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the Board Chairperson or presiding Board member. Each case will be presented to the Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the Board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the Board Chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by Board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Carrie, if you'd like to present the first case, or should we have the -- since it's a hearing, we should have them sworn in first before you?
Yes, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so those who wish to speak...
Okay, so anyone here for... Anyone wishing to speak for case number 2019-22, please come forward and be sworn in. Carrie, no one has signed up for this, so I guess we'll just go ahead with your staff presentation.
Case 2019-022 is a request for a special use permit to develop a property with a manufactured home. Residential protected districts allow manufactured homes but with a special use permit. So remember that special use permit proceedings are a little bit different than a zoning proceeding. I have...
Carrie...
Excuse me.
Our monitors aren't working.
Our monitors are not on.
The expert is here to see if they're working.
Probably things cutting them off.
And can I be heard in the back of the room? Okay, thank you. I wanted to be sure. Right, number seven on your staff report outlines the process for approving a special use permit. This property is located in the rural transition class of the county, showing here where that's located on the land use plan. And the parcel itself within that zoning district, the parcel with aerial photography, view of aerial photography, there are other housing types similar to this in the area in the neighborhood. Do you have questions for me?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you know how many mobile homes will be on this piece of property?
One, just one. It's a single-family residence, yes. Yes, it's a single-family residential use. They are just asking for this particular housing type.
And have you seen the house plan itself to make sure that it follows all the manufactured housing Class AA?
Yes, ma'am, and it will as we go through the building permit process. It will get another scrutiny, as it were, before it's permitted.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
I can't tell -- I've got a black and white map. I can't tell the extent of the residential protected area.
It goes -- it spans from Cherry Grove Road. You see that Cherry Grove Road at the top?
Yes.
Is surrounded on both sides with residential protected?
Yes.
And then as you come south on 87, it is all residential protected on the east side with some parcels on the west side of that road. It kind of comes in and out of residential protected there.
So from the aerial photograph, it looks like maybe there are a number of manufactured homes on these residential protected lots?
Correct. They were there before that designation was placed on these parcels.
Any other questions for staff? Motion to approve or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit. And in doing so, the Board should adopt the following statements as required by North County General Statute 153A-341 and General Statute 153A-342. The Board's action adopting this special use permit is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because the proposed use is allowed in a residential protected zoning district if a special use permit is granted. The proposed use with a special use permit is consistent with all other relevant maps or plans officially adopted by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, Rockingham County Land Use Plan, and small areas area plans. The Board considers its action in adopting the proposed special use permit to be reasonable because the proposed use is a public necessity and will benefit the community as a whole. The proposed special use permit imposes development conditions specific to the site which minimize detriments to adjoining properties and the surrounding community. The size of the tract is appropriate for the special use permit requested. The effects of the special use permit within the larger community context are positive because it would provide a vital service to the county. The proposed amendment is an appropriate use for the land considering its effect upon the entire community as a social, economic, and political unit. On balance, the following factors: the size of the tract in question, the compatibility of the permitting action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits and the detriments resulting for the permitting action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present. Interadjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed special use permit. And the Board considers its action in adopting the special use permit to be in the public interest because the special use permit, as proposed, would not negatively impact property values and the quality of life in this area of the county. The proposed special use permit has sufficient design features that would not negatively impact the existing housing in the neighborhood. The proposed special use permit is designed to meet or exceed all requirements and goals of the existing UDO and the comprehensive plan. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The application is approved by the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we proceed, can I recommend that we move case C up to the second case that we're here to discuss?
I'm in concurrence with that. We have a lot of speakers that have signed up for one case and only two for the other case, so we're going to... I'm going to ask Mr. Lee to make a motion to switch the order of these cases.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we hear case 2019-025 before we hear 2019-023.
Thank you. I second that motion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Carrie, could we hear the particulars for case number 2019-25?
Case 2019-025 is a request for rezoning from residential agricultural to residential protected for the purposes of a major subdivision. The parcel is located near Wentworth... excuse me, in the... I want to make sure that I... okay, in the urban transition land class of the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. A picture of the parcel, this is actually several parcels that together will be rezoned in order to be developed in future. And an aerial view of the parcels that are being requested for rezoning. The urban transition land class of the land use plan is purposed to provide for continued intensive urban and economic development and redevelopment of existing cities, but also to provide for future urban and economic development on lands that are most likely to be scheduled for the provision of public services and utilities. Lands being developed for urban purposes but which have not had usual urban services necessary to accommodate population growth over the next 20-year period, and lands which can be readily serviced with usual urban services that are generally free from physical limitations for development. You know, I don't usually do this, but I can announce staff's recommendation. You have it in your staff report, but I'm happy with this case and the next to go into that for the public's interest. Staff does conclude that sufficient information has been provided, remembering that it's for a straight rezoning, and staff recommends that the rezoning does meet the intent of the land use plan and will fit well within the context of current uses, either allowed or in use now in the community.
Are we to understand that all four of these parcels are going to become one housing subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay. Any idea how many houses are planned for?
At this point, there is no design. It's just being requested for rezoning so that the applicant can then see what sort of design fits the land.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Any breakdown... So, is... do you know if all the land has been purchased yet?
My belief is that the land is in a contingency contract, under contract contingent upon the rezoning.
And that's all four parcels together?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there any contingency? Will they have to come back if one or more of the parcels, if it does not close?
If the property doesn't close, it would be up to the property, current property owner, whether... I'm not sure if I answered the question, actually, because when...
It's going to be in tota... it's going to be all or nothing, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
That was my question.
Additional questions for staff? Is the applicant representing McKinney &amp; Sons here? Please, sir, if you would, state your name and address.
My name is Mike McKinney with McKinney &amp; Sons Builders, and I reside at 635 Williamson Creek Road in Ruffin.
And what is it that you would like to tell the Board about this application?
My plans are to build probably 1,500 to 1,800 square foot houses. They would all be site-built or stick-built, so I think it would actually help the area. I've been doing little minor subdivisions in the county, and I've had good luck in the last two years with those size houses of houses. And we do have Dan River water out there. I'll have to have it extended, but it's there.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. McKinney, so how many houses do you anticipate building on this tract?
Gene Robertson has done just a rough scenario. We're probably looking at maybe 17 to about maybe 24.
And I'll ask this question of you. So you're considering all four parcels in totality, but is this an all or nothing? If one doesn't close, then you're not going to do the project?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. McKinney? Thank you, sir. Is Linda O'Daniel here? For the record, please state your name and address, please.
Linda O'Daniel, 2455 Wentworth Street.
And what is it that you would like us to know?
Well, I have some questions about this because my land joins that land. I want to know how close it's going to be to... I have a lake down there, and I have a pond down there, and I have signs all through the woods, you know, no trespassing. I want to know how close this is going to be to where my place is, so I don't have to worry of somebody coming on my property, getting drowned. I mean, I don't know what this consists of. I don't know... I was wondering how many homes, and I just heard what he said. It's a private area. This has been built back... my dad did this back in the late '50s. And it's... I just... it's a private area. I don't want a lot of people to have to worry with around there. I want to know, is my property, is that going to increase or decrease in value? Will it affect my taxes? What exactly residential protected does that mean?
The main difference between residential protected and residential agricultural is that residential protected does not allow single-wide mobile homes. It has stricter standards for... The other difference is that residential protected does allow subdivisions of more than five lots, whereas residential agricultural does not.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. But that's just a concern of mine, and I know that they sent me a card to come tonight because it does join my property back there, and I don't know how that's going to affect me, and I would, you know, be concerned on how that will take place.
Okay. Do you know now approximately how close to the property line your pond is or your lake?
I really honestly don't know, but you leave my pond, and I got the runoff, then you go up a hill, and then right there where it's...
Can you see on the picture?
You can see on the picture the first lot where that pink line comes straight back to the woods. It's in that corner. And you may be able to see the lake up there.
You can see it better on the...
Yeah, I have an aerial of it, but I forgot to bring it.
We have an aerial here.
Okay, so you can see how close that is. It's about an acre or more is the lake. Water comes from an underground spring. It's a lot of wetland around there. I've got several springs on my property. I've got another one on... we used to have horses down there and had lights going down to the stable and everything, and that was up on the hill, which we don't have the horses anymore. But it is close enough to me because the land joins through there because the Cullen House, or was it Edwards House, is right before Borum's. And my land goes behind Cullen's and goes on up, and then the corner gets joining with Borum's. And so I just, you know, my lake is, I guess it's 15-foot at the dam, and the water, of course, comes out the dam, comes out and goes down the creek and goes to the city Cook's pond and goes on out. And I also have a pond to the right of it, so...
Well, we can't answer your questions about the pond, but we're going to ask Mr. McKinney to come back up in a way of rebuttal, and perhaps he can answer your question.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And bear in mind that if things like buffers or anything like that's required, all housing subdivision plans have to be first scrutinized by a government body called the Technical Review Committee, and that subdivision plan would have to meet that committee's approval.
Thank you.
So if Mr. McKinney would like to come back up, perhaps he can answer some of your
I have not walked on her property, but the parcels that I'm looking at are elevated, and I'm up on a ridge, and it is... it appears to be a creek down below there, and I assume that's what she's talking about.
Any idea what the elevation drop is?
Oh, it's a good little drop. I haven't counted feet, you know, the lines, but I, you know, it's...
30 feet?
Every bit of it.
Okay.
And as far as the springs, I've, you know, I've walked the perimeter of the land I'm looking at. I haven't seen any springs there, but I'm sure they're down in that bottom she's referring to. And I really don't... I haven't seen the pond, so I really don't know how close it is. I've only seen it on a map.
Ms. O'Daniel, does that satisfy your question?
Well, I was just concerned though because, you know, since part of that is my property for the... for it joining, how that would affect me?
Well, it should affect you all. I mean, there may be a few trees in the land, but other than that, if you go down a mile or two, lots should be on the...
But see, I'm wondering, if you're going to start up there where the Edwards House is, where the trailer sits, are y'all going to start building there?
It may be one or two lots in front of it.
Oh, but nearer the road? Okay, so it shouldn't be anything far back as to where the woods are?
Not maybe.
And then the woods through the dam, well, where my dam is, it's a creek that runs all the way through, but you wouldn't be going that back that far?
Actually, it'll be a short road going in with a cul-de-sac, and those back lots back there will be larger lots.
Uh-huh.
So you just probably go in those...
No, you can't put a building back there anywhere if it's going to drop off that fast.
I know it's... before they got the lines, my land's over on that side, so I just wondered how it would affect me. Would it affect me any wise other than somebody living that close, or as to value or anything like that?
Well, I don't know about the value, but I mean, you know, I'll have to hire an engineer as far as having the water runoff and stuff like that. It'll have to be engineered, so I'm sure I'll take all that into consideration.
So would somebody be helping me about any of this, or what's going on, so this...
Kind of like that, yeah. I think he has standards in God, and I still have to follow the engineer.
So as we are...
Ms. O'Daniel, perhaps I can answer your question this way. As far as notification, anything the Planning Board approves tonight is submitted to the county commissioners and is subject to their final approval, so you would get a chance to discuss this in front of them. And the next meeting for this is going to be?
January the 21st.
January 21st.
Okay, thanks.
So if you'll write that down, you'll have an opportunity then to question them before final approval is given.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. McKinney, thank you. At this time, is there a motion to approve or deny the application?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve, or I make a motion that we approve the request in front of us. The Planning Board shall advise and comment on whether the proposed amendment is consistent. The Planning Board shall provide written recommendations... The Planning Board shall advise and comment on whether the proposed amendment is consistent with any land use plan that has been adopted and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The Planning Board shall provide written recommendation to the governing board that addresses plan consistency and other matters deemed appropriate by the Planning Board. But a comment by the Planning Board that proposes amendment is inconsistent with the land use plan shall not preclude consideration or approval of the proposed amendment by the governing board. In recommending approval for the zoning amendment before the Planning Board, the Board hereby adopts the following statements as required by NC General Statute 153A-341. The Planning Board has determined that the zoning amendment is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. The proposed zoning amendment, case number 2009-025, is appropriate for the proposed land use and is consistent with all of the maps and plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The Board has determined that the zoning amendment is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. As a whole, this zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of the urban transition land class.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Case number 2019-023 has the approval of the Planning Board.
There we go. Case... excuse me, case 2019-023 is a request for rezoning from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional district. It's a two-acre parcel at the junction of Highway 158, Glencoe Church Loop, and Hudson Road. The property, the neighborhood is currently being used for residential and agricultural purposes with a school being built across the street. The residential is predominantly residential and agricultural with the school and a travel trailer park about a third of a mile to the south on Highway 158. This property was zoned as residential agriculture with the adoption of the ordinance in 1988. A previous rezoning request was submitted to our offices in 2018, denied by the planning board and then removed, or withdrawn by the applicant. The property is located in the rural transition land class of the Rockingham County Land Use Plan, described as follows. "The purpose of this, of this land area is to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods and to balance the need to retain the area's rural character and beauty with the strong demand for continued residential development." Characteristics of this land class are lands where residential development is grouped in existing neighborhoods and cross-road community settlements, and where it will occur in similar neighborhoods and settlements during the following 20-year period, lands with limited commercial development with an emphasis on mixed use. Limited public services available now or in the future with no anticipation of public sewer services being provided. Residential density is intended to be low to moderate with a strong emphasis on cluster development to help retain rural character. Staff went into a more thorough analysis of the land use plan than what I have just outlined. Short of reading all of the analysis, I hope that you've had a minute to look over it. My comments on this case is that this conditional zoning amendment should be carefully considered with the intent and descriptions of the rural transition land class. The location of neighborhoods serving conveniences across from a school is a logical pattern for this intersection. The design and buffering of the site, though, is extremely important for its compatibility to the area. Future requests that could potentially deepen the commercial district at this location must be carefully considered for compatibility with adjacent and nearby residential and agricultural land uses. More detailed planning for the southwest area of the county should be considered. However, you do have the current land use plan as your guide before you, right here and now. The other point that I didn't make in this paragraph, one of the reasons why I feel like it's a logical pattern for this intersection is due to the anticipated widening of Highway 158, which is a major east-west corridor through the state of North Carolina as well as this county. Based on an analysis of the case, requests from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional use, staff recommends approval with careful consideration of conditions necessary to ensure conformance to the land use plan and adequately address expected development impacts.
Any questions for staff? I have one. What is the anticipated date of the beginning of construction to widen 158?
It, right now, is far future. Twenty, well, the, this section to the west of us is actually slated for, Winston-Salem is actually slated for widening in 2020 and 21. This section, however, is still in the, in a longer range comprehensive plan, but it is in the state transportation improvement program.
So the tentative starting date of 2023 for that is out the window or still?
I wouldn't count on it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on it. I only know, my experience is watching highways like I-73, which took forever, are here and will be, you know, those are landscape changing, changes. The, the timing could be, could be long, could be short, but it is, it is a, a future plan. Are there, well, you, there is a memorandum from Terramore in your packet with their conditions. That's important to consider. And I do know that they're here tonight and will answer more questions about those conditions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you know what the proximity is to Highway 220, I-73? How many miles from this is that is?
It's, it's very, it's relatively close, yeah. Yeah, I don't know that mileage. I know the applicant will be able to answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Spencer, you, you mentioned the interchange being logical. I think you were talking about traffic intersection. I'm not sure that we've got that information in our packet. Can you explain to me what the?
Just, I don't, I mean that the, the positioning of the school across the street from this, from this area of land in this intersection is, from a planning perspective, a logical growth pattern. And the, the development of anything that goes into this triangle will be likely, will be encouraged for, to have a driveway directly across from the school's driveway to better control traffic through there.
An application will have to be made to DOT for the driveway permit, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Do we know if there's a, is there a stoplight there currently or plans to be?
There, there is not now, but the stoplights are based on anticipated capacity, road capacity. And with the school, the school will contribute probably more than anything to the need for a stoplight in future. But that is, at this point, my understanding is that it doesn't qualify for that extra signalization. I have, I have here some slides that describe the applicant's facade options for the property. This is a rendering showing the front, proposed front of the building and the back of the building. The applicant proposes finishing the building on all four sides based on its location. And I believe that they would just bring options to you tonight when they present, so that there are some... This is a picture of a lighting schematic that they've prepared for the, for the area. They do not propose parking lot lighting. And the wall packs, full cutoff wall packs that will be on the building itself, are expected to provide these levels of illumination. It's difficult to read, but it's definitely a, does, is, has, does not have a huge impact on neighboring properties, especially without parking lot lighting. Are there questions about the conditions from an ordinance standpoint? Limiting the uses to retail sales, convenience food stores, but not gasoline would be those retail sales allowed in the neighborhood commercial district.
Any further questions for staff? Is a representative of the applicant here? For the record, please state your name and address.
Yes, Mr. Chair. My name is Clint Cogburn. I'm an attorney with the law firm Tugalduggins with offices at 100 North Green Street in Greensboro, North Carolina. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant Terramore Development LLC. Here with me as well is Daniel Almazan. He is a site acquisition specialist for Terramore Development LLC. And then we also have a group, I'll be here on behalf of the property owners. And I know that they have signed up to speak as well, so you'll be hearing from them. Just to kind of go into some background, this property is located at the corner of US Highway 158 in Glencoe Church Loop. It's approximately 2.085 acres, and it's currently vacant. The current zoning, as staff mentioned, is residential agricultural. We have proposed a neighborhood commercial conditional district zoning. Staff just went through the conditions. I think the primary one that we put forth here is a reduction in use, reducing it down to just the convenience store use and eliminating all of their potential uses in the neighborhood commercial district. I'll also note something that staff mentioned is, this is not the first time we've been here before you for this application. We came here before it was a previous application. The planning board voted it down. We heard you guys loud and clear. We've worked with staff and this board to improve this application. And we believe that we've done this by, initially, we had, we had brought an application that proposed highway commercial zoning. That's obviously a more intense commercial district. We have now put forward a neighborhood commercial district, which is a low intense commercial designation with the added conditions for facade, lighting, and eliminating all of the uses. And, and really drilling down this used to being only a convenience store and one that does not allow for a gas station, which can be a heavy traffic generator. As the store site plan shows, this is proposed to be about a 9,100 square feet store. There is landscape buffering and setbacks proposed here that are consistent with the land use or with the UDO. Those are buffering along Glencoe Church Loop and US 158 will be a 10-foot type 3 buffer. The buffering adjacent to the, to the property there will be a 15-foot type 1 buffer. There will also be increased screening next to that adjacent property with a, with fence, with a proposed fence there. Additionally, there'll be the setbacks along the roadways. It'll be a 30-foot setback to the building along the adjacent property line. It's a 15-foot building setback. But I'll also point out that we have the increased buffering and screening there along that adjacent property with the fencing and the added buffering class. In total, there will be about 37 parking spaces. Those are located primarily along 158 and flank the building. The dumpsters will be fully enclosed, as shown on the rendering here, in the back of the building. And there, we do point out that there was no traffic impact study required. This is primarily a passive use in that it captures traffic that is existing in the area. It's not a traffic generator, per se. Dollar General goes into these areas and, and looks to capture traffic there. People coming to and from their job, people coming to and from school, people driving through. It is not intended as a quote unquote destination, per se, but to, to enhance the area and to provide a necessary service to that area. So it's not a heavy traffic generator in that sense. Additionally, this will be fully curved and gutted, and there's the upgraded facade. And what, what we've shown you is what we're, what my client is, is proposing right now. But we are, I have it obviously open to the board's suggestions and input on that. We believe that this upgraded facade will fit well with the community. It kind of has a country store look to it. We want to make sure that we're, we're consistent with what is already there in the community and are not coming in and putting something that will be an eyesore for the people that have to drive by it every day. So just to give you a little bit of background here, as I've mentioned, this is a proposed Dollar General. And Terramore Development is a preferred developer for Dollar General in the southeast United States. To give you some background for that, Dollar General goes and designates preferred developers in different regions throughout the United States. And those developers achieve that status by consistently delivering on the requirements of Dollar General and putting forward very thorough plans, very prominent and very stylistically beautiful developments that, that succeed. So this is what Terramore has done throughout the southeast United States and in North Carolina. And so we believe that this is consistent with what is required under the UDO. It's consistent with the land use plan. We echo staff's recommendation here. We believe that it's consistent with the area. It is a area that is largely that residential agricultural designation, but it also has mixes of residential mixed district, residential protected. There is rural commercial that is directly across from the Lake Brent Road intersection. There's neighborhood commercial located directly across at the Haynes Road and US 158 intersection. There's also highway commercial further on down. So this is an area that although that it is, that predominates residential, there is existing commercial in this area that serves that residential. And that is the intent with this development, is to serve the residential area, to serve the neighbors here, and to be something where on their way to and from, from home to work, et cetera, they can stop by, grab something, grab some milk, grab some bread, and be on their way. So we believe that it's consistent with the growth of the area, with the future widening of 158. And we believe that this will be a mix of residential and commercial along this roadway in the future. So we believe that we are, are here with a plan that, with the conditions that we have proposed with the upgraded facade, that this board and this county can, when that commercial development comes through, can say, these are the requirements. You have to have an upgraded facade. You have to come here and limit the uses. It needs to be more neighborhood fitting. And, and we believe that that is consistent with this area. I'm going to call up to the podium right now Daniel Almazan with Terramore Development, and we're happy to answer any questions afterwards.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Almazan. I live at 306 Oakbrook Drive in Salisbury, North Carolina. Thanks for the opportunity to, to discuss this rezoning with the board. I appreciate all the details Clinton gave you. So just, just to give you a little bit of background, Terramore Development has been doing Dollar General stores for the last 16 years. We've developed over 400 stores during that time. And their corporate office is in Thomasville, Georgia. So they develop stores in Georgia, Florida. And we've got 23 counties in North Carolina that we develop stores. We pride ourselves in, in maintaining a high-quality product. We have to do that in order to stay a preferred developer of Dollar General. One of the opportunities that we had by learning from the, from the last visit that we had before the planning board was, it gave us a chance to go back and sort of re-engineer this building. Not only the fact that it was a neighborhood commercial now that we're applying for, but in this new building, we go with a pitched roof, which definitely is a lot more consistent, a lot more congruent with, with the surrounding residential neighborhood. One of the other things that, that about this particular corner, this location that's on the corner of 158, Glencoe Church, and even has a buffering road of Hudson Road, is, is that this prevents any sprawl of commercial. This is really self-contained, especially with some of the growth that's already anticipated by the county with the new water line coming in there, a huge investment there with DOT planning on widening 158. We feel like it's a very appropriate use for this. And, and even with the school across the street does give us that kind of mixed-use opportunity here to service the area. The market area typically is about three miles for us. And so in this case, we've got about anywhere from 2,500 individuals that, that they look at servicing in this, this service or market area for them. I know that there's probably a lot of questions. And, and I look forward to be able to come back because I think that there may be some questions from some of the community members that I'd, I'd love to have the opportunity to respond to. I'll just ask if the board has any specific questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
I have some questions, but I don't think he's, he's not the one I want to ask the question.
What's that?
I, I have some questions. I'm just not sure you're the person to answer them. Because you're talking more about the construction of the building, correct? That's your level, that's your expertise.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify, because as the developer, we build the store and we own the store. So Dollar General is a tenant. And so even though I know a lot of information about how that they run their stores, the hours of operations, I can just give you an example, like tax value of these stores, this one should be around 1.5 million. Their annual sales is a little bit over 1.2 million. Their, their, the number of employees is between eight and 10, full and part-time employees.
So you're anticipating 1.2 million per year?
Yes, ma'am.
For this store?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you, it's 9,100 square feet, did I hear Mr. Cogburn say?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, maybe you can't answer my questions. Give it a try. How many customers per day do you anticipate?
I know in some of the traffic studies, I can break it down more by hour than I can by daily count.
Which could leave me, which could answer the next question. What are the peak hours that you anticipate?
The peak hours are usually between 8:00 and 10:00 AM, and then again from about 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Basically, those trips, people coming to and from work or school. Let's see, I know the counts that I most recently saw is usually about 40 to 50 per hour. Those trips are typically about two to three minutes in duration, and so they're pretty quick trips.
And how many cars would enter the parking lot in and/or out at those peak hours?
I wish I had the specifics on that, but I can, I can sort of answer it in a different way. Because I think you may be kind of asking about, what's the traffic impact?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So right now, Highway 158, I think by the last traffic count or the average daily traffic count was about 6,000 cars a day. Typically, our impact is between 2% and 3% increase in traffic. And so those additional trips are extra trips where the people make it out of convenience because obviously not all of our trips are just people coming to and from, you know, their destinations. And so if that gives you an idea, you're looking at, you know, anywhere between 600 and, let's see, 3%? Well, that would be 12. That would be 1,200 additional vehicles or 1,800.
And have you studied the surrounding area to determine any kind of impact on local vendors? What's your closest other competition or local vendor?
I think that we've got two convenience stores that are located, let's see, there's one, maybe two miles to the east, and then another one, I think it probably about a mile and a half.
Do you know if they are a chain or locally owned?
I'm not aware of that.
Also, being directly across the street from a school, what kinds of products do you intend to stock, particularly that you would market to children?
Well, that gets into the specifics of how the store runs. No different than a, you go to a grocery store.
So specifically asking, if you've got kids across the street, they're going to be, they're going to be in your store. Do you sell mostly high sugary, high-content sugary drinks, snacks, high-content, sugar-content snacks, those kinds of things?
Yeah, I think it gets into kind of like the product lineup.
Right.
Have to look at a percentage of the store. So while I can't give you maybe a breakdown of how that they market or the quantities that they sell, I can tell you, like if you look at the 9,100 square foot building, whenever they stock those and you look at the aisles, you usually have about 15, maybe 20% is reserved for food. So within that, you've got a lot of cooler space, anywhere from 20 to 25 coolers that have milk and eggs and meats and sometimes pre-made meals. And then, then just like any of the convenience stores that you were talking about at the other ends, you know, for those convenience items, do they sell candy and sweet drinks? Absolutely. And so it's really more of a fulfilling demand than it is maybe supply creating the demand.
Will this store have fresh fruits and vegetables?
Actually, they've got a program, it's called DG Fresh. They've rolled that out in about 3% of their stores. And what they're trying to do is evaluate what, again, what that demand is because they tend not to do it, build it, and, you know, they will come. It's more that they realize that there's an existing demand and they have to fill it. And so in those cases, I know that they are rolling that out, but I don't know the ETA on that because they're just evaluating what works. And especially whenever you have fresh produce, they, it goes bad quickly. And so they really have to pin down.
So do you know if the marketing, if Dollar General marketing, do they stock the store or is there a plan to stock the store based on the neighborhood that you're located? Example, if you've got, if you're across the street from a school, you might, you might change your stock based on the clientele.
I'm used to seeing their stock being very consistent.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned this store's going to be 9,100 square feet.
Yes, sir.
Is it comparable in size to other Dollar Generals or larger?
It's, let's see, they call this, I mean, this is our standard store. Whenever you get into metro areas, they have a smaller store that's a 7,500. And they also have, it's called a DG Plus, which is 10,400. So, but this is the standard store that you see, and like the one over in Stokesdale, it's that same size.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Before we call in speakers, it appears as all very many of you wish to speak about this case. If you agree with an argument that's already been presented, we ask that you try to consolidate your comments so that that argument won't keep being repeated and repeated and repeated. We want you to be able to speak, but if we try to consolidate in that way, more of you will have an opportunity to speak. We have a, we have a 10 o'clock adjournment time, so that leaves two hours to try to fit all of you in. So I think on that basis, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to try to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. That being said, could we hear from Boyd Bennett, please?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Boyd Bennett. I do live at 8,100 Harbor Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina. I also have a residence and a farm at 313 Bennett Farm Road in Stokesdale, in Stokesdale, North Carolina, but it's in Rockingham County. I represent the landowners who are trying to sell this property. In addition to myself, my brother's here, Bert Bennett. He lives in North Myrtle Beach and also lives on a family farm in Rockingham County. Gloria Carroll, who's a cousin, lives in Eden. Herb McCollum, another cousin, who lives in North Myrtle Beach. My brother and Gloria signed up to speak also, but in order to save time, I decided to not speak tonight and let me cover the issues for our family, if that's okay.
Thank you for that.
All four of us were born in this county. Three of us live here full-time or part-time. This property has been in my family since 1935, and aunt and uncle lived on the property and farmed it for 60 years. The last one passed away in 1995. We have managed that property, rented out the, there's two homes on the other part of the triangle. We've managed it for 25 years. About four years ago, we decided to put the property up for sale. We're all getting older. We no longer want to manage the property. We're ready to sell the property. So we started this property, this idea of selling this property about four years ago. The tract was originally 49 acres in this farm. We had hoped someone from the community would buy it, fix up the houses, because the houses possibly have some historical value. They were built in the 20s. They certainly have a lot of sentimental value to us. We've shown it to a lot of people. We've shown it to some people in the neighborhood. But so far, we've not been able to make a sale on the property. So because we cannot sell the entire piece of property as one piece, we decided we'd have to divide it up. We sold 32 acres of the 49 acres to the Bethany Community Charter School, and we think that was a plus for the community. We sold two acres to a neighbor who wanted that property for his daughter, who had property on the backside of ours. Approximately a year and a half to two years ago, we were approached by Terramore Development, representing Dollar General, and they wanted to buy the two acres to build the store. They offered us a fair market value for the property. They assured us they would take community concerns into consideration. As previously been mentioned, they have got a proposed design. It's an upgraded store. They're going to provide additional trees and shrubs to reduce the visibility. The lighting will be the type that just comes straight down. It won't project out. Terramore and their staff met with the community school, staff from the community school, and it's my understanding, as far as I know, there's no opposition from the school for the store to go there. They also had a meeting with the community to get input from the community regarding their concerns. After all that, we decided to sign a purchase contract with Terramore and hope to get the property rezoned and sold. Now, I know there is some resistance in the community to this. I also know that there's some people in the community that want the store there. I'd like to make just a few brief points. Rockingham County is encouraging development, particularly in the southwest part of the county, and that's where this property is located. The county and the state have spent several million dollars extending a water line down 158 over to US 220, now I-73, and hopefully into Guilford County to spur more growth for the southwest part of the county. A sewer line is in the process of being extended in southwest Rockingham County, down 220-I-73. The county's spending a lot of money for that. They're doing it for growth. US 220 has been four-lane from Rockingham County to Greensburg with county support and for growth for the county. I-73 has been completed from Interstate 40 and the airport into Rockingham County, and the county supported that and did that to promote growth for Rockingham County. 150 Home Development, as my understanding, is in the process of coming to NC 65, Work Line 65, three miles from this property. And the county is running water to down past that development, and it's my understanding that they're going to run a sewer system for that development. And as previously heard, DOT has some plans, maybe long-range plans to four-lane 158. These things are ultimately good for the county. They bring more industry, people, and jobs. And as you well, well, are well aware, the county needs the income for its schools, community colleges, and infrastructure, and many other things. My second point, in the last 20 years or so, 12 housing developments have been built along Highway 158 within two miles of this site. Now, if you just drive down 158, it looks like a rural community. You go down the side roads and you'll see what has already happened. There are 12 communities that I counted, Hunter Glen, Spring Lake, Southern Woods, Glencoe Forest, Chestnut Grove, Country Park, Old Mill, Hash Lane, Saddle Brook, Wedgewood, Winston Forest, and the Greensburg National Golf Course community. They're all within a couple of miles of the site. And I would dare say there are hundreds of homes made up of these various communities. This has been, this has been good for the county. More development is coming, and I realize that's difficult for the people that've lived there for a long time. But we're, this property is close to the Guilford County line. Greensburg's coming out that way, so there'll be additional changes. My third point is really a question. What usually follows housing development and increased population density? When you get that many people moving in, what follows that? Well, the answer is generally retail development and stores. And it's ironic that I remember in that same area, within a mile of this area, there used to be two stores, Witty Store and Wilson Store, and then before that, Hudson Store. Of course, they've long ago gone by the wayside. But as these little mom-and-pop stores go, what replaces them? To take care of the people that live in all these communities, the Dollar Generals, the Family Dollar, the Dollar Trees, the Walmarts, they come in because they see there's a business opportunity in to serve that population. People move in, then retail establishments come to serve those developments and the people who live there. In my opinion, it's just a natural development. In closing, I would encourage this planning board to approve this zoning request. It has been reviewed by staff. This is our second time here. The staff, the planning staff recommends approval, and again, would hope you would approve it to allow us to move forward with the sale of our property. And I appreciate the time and consideration you've given me in this matter.
Any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Thank you.
So you were speaking for Bert Bennett and Gloria Carroll?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Then is Scott, is it Sears?
Yes, sir. My name's Scott Sees. I live at 111 Hash Lane in Broadwood Estates, right across the street from where this is going to be, proposed to be built. I do oppose this. It's right in my front yard. Mr. Bennett, you have every right to sell your property. I just oppose the commercial entity being in my front yard that close. I think there's a better place for it. Just listening to everybody that's just spoke, sounds nice and rosy, like we need to approve this right now. Last year, when this was in front of the board, it was recommended denied. It didn't meet but three of the, didn't meet but three of the growth management strategies for this land. And now reading the, reading the new staff report here, the 2019-023 that was published, sounds like it's already approved. Sounds like there's a big change in the planning board here. I don't know what's changed. We all know that there's going to be growth in the county. To me, I look at this here as this is more than a spot, spot rezoning that really doesn't support the land use plan. One of the things that they talk about here in the UDO is the UDO was designed to promote health, safety, and general welfare. It seems like the school has become a magnet for a Dollar General store. I have nothing against Dollar General. We all shop in them. We have five Dollar General stores within 15 miles of where this is being proposed to be built. Rock, you know, Rockingham, or Reedsville, Reedsville, you're a 10-minute drive from where this property is. Go up to 220 Stokesdale, Summerfield. If you really want to, you can go down to even Brown Summer. There's plenty of them around. I just don't, don't, I think there's a better place for it. It seems like we're ready to just build this, like this is the only thing that's going to save Rockingham County and bring jobs, and it's not. One of the things I want to talk about just real briefly was safety. It says right here, promote the health and safety and general welfare of our residents. The intersection that the young lady over here talked about, the intersection of 158 and Glencoe Church Loop Road is a dangerous intersection. Just the way it's positioned, I pull out of it every morning. You look to the right, you're looking over your shoulder to go over this way to look, see the oncoming traffic that's coming over the blind, the blind hill there, and people are flying. During school hours, the speed limit drops from 55 to 45. Not too many people slow that much. They still come flying through there, but you have some peak hours in the morning. That exitway, they have a traffic pattern. Traffic goes in on the Hudson roadside, and the parents that are dropping off students are supposed to come out right onto the 158 side. If you've ever sat and watched that, that's a lot of traffic. Everybody's trying to get in and out, and there's so much traffic just coming through on that high-speed way. It's supposed to be 45. People come over the hill, they just keep going. There's no enforcement there. They see the flashing light. I'm surprised somebody hasn't really gotten hit right there, just that time period. And it goes again in the afternoon. In the afternoon, when the pickup comes, picking up the students, it starts all over again. So there's a lot of traffic there that during these peak times, and it's actually pretty dangerous. And it's going to be right across the street from the, I guess, the driveway going into the Dollar General store if that gets built. Just more congestion. Something we watched last summer was a contractor was building the athletic fields out there. They're going to have a pretty nice athletic field out there, which is obviously going to lead to after-hour school activities. And I'm sure that, I know the school has policy that no students are to come in and out of the property unless they're on a bus or they're being dropped off by their parents or something in a car. It's the middle of school, those students aren't driving, so they have to have transportation. I really think that going to safety, that after-hour school activities out there on the athletic fields, how many students are going to look and say, hmm, let me run over to the Dollar General and get something to drink? So now we've got pedestrian traffic going across Highway 158. I'm sure that's going to happen eventually. It's something to consider. There was one, just one or two other things I wanted to touch on. That was one of them about this intersection there. I don't consider it a logical pattern for this intersection. Before we talked about that. And that's really all I really had to say. I don't know what has changed to a more positive note to approve this. The size of the lot's still the same. The restrictions for building on the property are the same. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Sees?
I have a couple of questions. In looking at, you can't see it here, but in looking at our map, the aerial view, your house is on our, what looks like on our left-hand side of Hash Lane?
Yes, ma'am. First house on the corner.
First house on the corner. Okay. And you're saying that this is going to be right in your front door?
Pretty much. It's right in my front yard. I stand right there in the front yard.
So do you have barrier plants?
Do I have barrier plants?
Right.
No, ma'am. I got one tree out there. Storms took down the other three.
So you don't have, like, any fencing or any Leyland cypress or anything like that?
We have a very open neighborhood. It's the entrance to Brattlewood Estates, where the rest of my neighbors live down in there. We're just not looking forward towards the increased foot traffic, the increased vehicle traffic. We still see the, you can sit out there just probably three or four times a day on a Saturday afternoon, you'll see the lost truck driver who got lost coming off of 73, didn't find the turnaround spot till he comes down to Glencoe Church, and then he turns around right there where we live at and goes back out because he's lost. There's a lot of truck traffic down in that area right now. And I think it's due to they're transitioning over from, they're coming from Reevesville, I think, but they're transitioning over to the 73 corridor. We're just seeing more and more tractor-trailer traffic coming east to west.
Any other questions for Mr. Sees? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I assume that your wife was going to speak to the same thing? Okay. Brandon Allen? Oh, you do want to speak? Okay.
I'm going to expand on what my husband said. I'm Kansas City, so I live at 111 Hash Lane, Summerfield. As a courtesy, I'm going to give you a copy, 250-plus signatures that went against rezoning requests from last year from the same parcel of land, the two-acre of land. This is just a courtesy copy. You know, these 250 signatures of individuals that are located within a two-mile radius of this property. And it is a matter of record from the 2018-023 request for rezoning last year that was denied by the planning department and the planning board. So just, I can share with you, you know, I'll leave you a copy.
Mr. Chair, are we allowed to consider this?
Pardon?
Being that it's from 2018?
Yeah, the dependence of relevancy. Since this is, technically, isn't a quasi-judicial, not even public hearing, the board has considered the weight of any sort of evidence to see if it's even beneficial or relevant. So being that it is earlier, you know, earlier in time and maybe not as relevant to the case at hand, the board will want to consider that.
I guess one of my concerns in asking that question is we have no way of knowing if these people still even live at these same addresses.
Sure, the legitimacy of it. It could be a matter of, of course, hearsay and those who aren't here to verify their signatures on a petition. Again, it's up to the board's discretion.
This is for reference only, and that was all I was given. I was bringing this up for, it was for reference only, and it was at the same timeframe. We do have new folks moving in. And if I need to do a new petition, we certainly will get another done. This is from the Glencoe Community's speech representatives and the individuals that, I mean, this is coming from the community from last year. But we can move on from that. I can understand that, you know.
We need to consider this.
I would like for us to admit the petition, and the board is capable of giving it the weight and credibility to which it deserves.
Because it's still important.
I was going to suggest that since it's from 2018, then since whatever we approve or deny here is eventually going to end up in front of the county commissioners, that the petition be reestablished or retaken to ensure that the number of people or that the people that are on the petition are still at those addresses. Well, could we have a motion either way, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we admit it, and the board is capable of giving it the weight and credibility to which it deserves.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. So we have, Ms. Sees, how many did you vote? Four, okay. So we'll accept the, we'll accept the petition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to also go on about the proposed site from the plan from last year.
I'd like to review this quick, you, to show you this 9,100-square-foot building, that's the proposed site. This is a different submittal than you just discussed?
What this is, is coming from the same site, from the same side, the two-acre plot. I'd like for the commissioners to look at the proposed site, if you could provide them the copy that I've given you. And this is just a reference point so they can show how this building's going to set on this two-acre plot.
Mr. Chairman, since we just moved to admit the petition, can we do that?
I think we probably will, yes.
I mean, I'll be, this is pretty much what I'm going to speak about again. I'd like y'all to have a visual, that's really what I'd like you to do. This may not be the way that, this is
Did you get one?
This is the proposal that was given by Terramore.
This is not a condition of the rezoning request. This is a conceptual sketch.
Thank you.
That is being handed out. Bear in mind, the petition was for a different zoning district than is being requested here tonight. And that this is a conceptual drawing that is not a condition of the rezoning.
I just have to say I'm not 100% comfortable considering this as fact when we don't have anything presented, when this is not presented to us in this context by Terramore. We really have no idea if this is what they intend or not. And I, for one, I mean, it's a nice drawing.
And it is a concept that Terramore has discussed, but it is purposely omitted from evidence by staff because it is not a condition of the zoning request.
Okay, can?
And we don't know, we have no idea whether Terramore has any intention of situating this. We just don't know what they're going to do.
The only thing you do know is what they have outlined in the conditions, that whatever design they have that they end up with that will be reviewed by staff and technical review committee will follow the conditions that they've proposed.
Well, on that basis, I I don't recommend that we consider this as part of the package that we're dealing with tonight. Okay, would you like to continue?
Okay. Are we going to look at the visual anyway, or do I, do I have to speak about it?
We're not going to consider it.
No, okay. Okay. Well, then I'll just talk through my head now. Okay, this land is like a triangle. Just think of a triangle. You've got two acres at one end, and you have approximately three acres at the other end. You have a 9,100-square-foot building going on that lot. You've got to have a drainage pump. You've got to have a septic tank. You've got to have buffers. You're going to have to have the right-of-way cut into it from the road to get into this property. They've just said, Daniel just said, that this property's going to be aligned to the charter school exit ramp. That is an exit-only. And their entrance way to their building is going to be on Highway 158. Okay, that's directly across the street. So we're talking about students coming out, students and family members picking up their children, et cetera, during the times of school, beginning and ending, athletic events when the athletic fields are complete, and other activities that happen at the school. So you're going to have that congestion right there. And you're talking about not a stoplight, right there, there's not a stoplight. It's either you turn right or left, et cetera. And you're going to be fighting this traffic, that traffic right at that point. Okay, let's go back to the other side on Glencoe Church Loop. There is a proposed entrance there as well. We don't have to look at this for, you know. There's going to be a proposed entrance way there. They want 37 spots, I'm sorry, was it 31?
31. 37?
37 parking spots. In the front of that lot, when you put a 9,100-square-foot building, you may have 30 feet in front of you before you go into the building. Maybe 30 feet. That's very close proximity to the road of 158 going in. And then their building's going to butt to the backside of it. Nowhere, no matter where you place this building on that lot, it's going to be abutted to the back spot of 158. You've got Hudson Road over here. Okay? You're talking traffic coming in, and this is a triangle. A very busy triangle in fact. So you've got traffic congestion. You're going to have, the accidents are enormous. I went to the Summerfield Fire District, but accidents in that area. And they've responded, quote, "quite a number of accidents." I didn't get to the Bethany Schools or the Bethany Community, to find out how many responses, the fire district responded there. There have been accidents at Lake Brent Road, at Night Produce up the street. Lots of accidents. And these are car crashes with fatalities. Let's go on to the manuse plan. She talks about a travel trailer park that was just less than a half-mile from where this proposed site is. This is not a retail establishment. That's a trailer park. A mobile home, mobile homes are in there. A travel trailer is where you can put your truck or a vehicle up to it and take the travel trailer with you, or the travel trailer is on wheels, and it can be a vehicle, and it can drive off. It was no really, that was okay. And that, our point, the neighbors didn't really complain about that because it was a mobile home park to start with. And they rezoned it to the RV parking to allow workers that are with the corridor, for the 220-158 corridor, for folks, for the workers that are building the businesses for the Rockingham County, the Guilford County, and the counties, you know, the surrounding counties, to build their businesses, which is fantastic. Okay, so that is, you know, a moot point for us. Soil was not addressed here in this plan. The soil, was that tested? I think it was, but I'm not sure. It wasn't in this plan. And it says here that the parcel will be served by an individual well, which is fine and septic. There is a water line that went through there. Are they going to hook up to the line? The Rockingham County line. It doesn't mention it, but it says it would be served by an individual well, which you will have to have a well, and you will have to have a water truck. I live in a subdivision. I don't have a well. I have a community well. They have community water. Talked about these strategies. There are 15 strategies. Last year with the plan, as my husband said, then an aisle, they met three of the 15 strategies, three. This year, they're meeting five. So it's still 67% of the strategies are not met. The strategy, 67%. That's a big number, I think. This is not a major intersection. There's a lot of accidents. There's no stoplight. There's no caution light. There is a caution light at the other end of Glencoe Church Loop. Now, they put a stoplight there. Usually a caution light, but they put a stoplight there. That's a four-way.
Could you work toward a conclusion, please?
Our vision statement. Our vision statement says that we will attract high-technology-based industries and workers and businesses, high-tech. I like Dollar General. I go to Dollar General. But this triangle that you want to put it on is two acres. Two point, I'm sorry, 2.085 acres. It's a small plot for a 9,100-square-foot building. Doesn't leave you much more area left over after you put a septic field in, you put a drainage pump, you know, the drainage, the septic area, and the dumpsters, and you talk about the big trucks going in and out of there, and you don't have much road frontage or any much of that. I think it's a denial that's set there. It's a spot zoning to be the best in a triangle that isn't very big.
Hold on one second. Are there any questions for Ms. Sees?
I'm sorry, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask you. I have a copy of your petition that was signed.
From last year, yes, sir, thank you.
And you even had people on here signing, lived in apartments in Madison, Danville, Virginia. How do they relate to this neighborhood?
I think, I can't answer that, but the majority, the majority are within a two-mile radius.
Well, there's quite a few in Madison, Mayodan, and like I say, Danville, Virginia.
Well, if, all right, let's, well, then, if we're looking at it, and we can probably take out approximately 25 to 50, and that would still be over 200 signatures, sir. There's still a lot of neighbors.
And also, you made reference to the safety.
The safety?
I made notes from my last meeting here, 2018. McMichael High School has Auto Zone, a Bojangles, Lowe's across the street. The kids, a lot of times, you're talking about pedestrian traffic. A lot of kids from high school walk across 220 to McDonald's, Burger King, Rockingham County High School.
Are you talking about Madison?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Rockingham County High School has a Family Dollar on the same side of the road, a Dollar General across the road. New Vision School in Madison has a bank, convenience store next door. So, you know, out in open like that, wide-open country, I don't see where it creates a major problem or unsafe conditions. That's all.
Any other questions from Misses? Thank you. I guess, thank you. Brandon Allen.
Hello, I'm Brandon Allen. I live 171 Hash Lane, down the road from Scott and Candace. First, I would like, I had some points I wanna make. And, you know, there are a lot of the same things that we've talked here, but I'm gonna make points, and one of the points I wanna make for safety, and I wanna address something you just said, Mr. Harris. You know, you, you talked about some schools that were in the county, and you talked about some businesses that were around those schools. Well, those, the things that you said that were, that I can think of right up front, those are different situations that we have in our area. You're talking about a spot on 158 where the, the speed limit is 55 miles per hour. There's no slowdown, there's no buffer coming into this. You're coming up to the top of a hill on a long stretch of 158, that a lot of people, you know, they go fast down the hill. Speed limit's 55, but they go a little faster. They're coming up on top of a hill, they top the hill, there's all of this, there's not a lot of time to react. Another one of the concerns that, according to the safety, is I rode through there today, I ride through there every day. I didn't see a good spot to put a turning lane, just to turn into this thing. So, I would ask you guys to consider that when making this, this decision. Also, really consider the future plans of 158. It's been talked about a lot, but if you pay attention to what these guys are proposing, I'm not an engineer, but I don't see a lot of room to widen this highway here if we put this business right there. The other thing I wanna talk about that has also been said is environmental impacts. You know, this triangle, none of these maps show it, but this triangle is a low point right here. I mean, everything around this triangle drains into this triangle. And if you guys go out and look at it, you can see it. Nothing here shows it. But I do see in that rendering right there that those AC units are up on stilts, and I wonder why they're put up there. So, that's one thing that stood out to me. The other thing, the retail location across from the school, you know, I'll point, they've made mention of that, but I also'd like to think that, you know, my kid goes to this school, I don't really want them selling beer and cigarettes so they can go over there and try to buy them. I mean, it is what it is. Uh, the other thing is, Ms. Talbert, you asked some questions about Dollar General, and I would ask, before you make a decision on voting yea or nay, to do a little research on Dollar General, what the products they sell and what they push. They've been in the news here lately, and I think that if, if you just Google that, you'd be very surprised. And the other thing is, you know, we talked about revenue that this brings. Dollar General employs eight people. And, you know, that's eight people, but, you know, how much revenue is that gonna bring to the county? Let's do a little research and really know, instead of just assuming that everybody's telling the truth. The other question I have for the Terramore guys is, and we talked about this in our meeting, and this was the truck traffic. Now, you mentioned something about keeping the truck traffic off Glen Cove, Glen Cove, and they would only be using 158. Is that still proposed? How is that on policing that? I mean, these, these guys are gonna take the easiest access to this Dollar General. And if they're fighting traffic on 158, they're gonna be on Glen Cove. So, that, that's my question. And that's all I have. I thank you for hearing me. You guys have any questions?
Hold on one second. Any questions for Mr. Allen?
I just wanna ask, you'd mentioned the speed limit 55.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that ever reduced to 45?
Only during school, school hours. It's not... During school hours, not, yeah, which is only, what, three, three hours a day? That's great for when you're dropping your kid off, but, you know, it's, it's wide open every other time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sims?
My questions have been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Woody?
I guess also.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffers or Ms. Jeffers?
Ms. Jeffers. Uh, let me expand some on...
Could you, for the record, did you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Dorit Jeffers. 1231 Hudson Road, Summerfield. I live on Hudson Road. And 158 is right here. When I'm coming west to come to my house and turn left on Hudson Road, I am scared to use the turn lane, because what people do is use a turn lane for a passing zone. So, I just slow down so I wait and see if anybody's coming over that hill before I turn in and get T-boned. It's dangerous. I've lived there all my life, live on 60-some acres. And yes, there are very nice housing developments around there. They've got, Boyd said, maybe 12. They're very nice. They're not your typical Dollar General. They would be like Candace, she goes and picks up a greeting card, because they're really cheap, same for me. The speed is, is 55, but it exceeds that a great deal. And like the gentleman said here, there's not room to widen that road. If you put a building there, I mean, right now, that whole triangle would probably disappear if you go to widen 158. I mean, the whole triangle, not just his land, but the other people that owns it. And the description that Daniel and the attorney gave about the area, it sounded like we have a lot of commercial developments around there, but we don't. There is, like Boyd said, there is, oh, no, that was Daniel. There's one locally-owned store about two or three miles this way, one three or four miles that way. And we have currently $18 Generals within 20 miles of us. Several really close. And referencing to 2018, the impervious surface was a big deal. Now, we've, we've kicked out one acre. And now, we've reduced it to two acres. So, I don't have the impervious surface. We'll shake out on that. And I'm, I know Carrie Spencer will, they'll have to research that. There is also a lot of farmland. That means a lot of tractors. But our family, our family at the other end of Hudson Road all around. Families, farmers depend on other farmers leasing their acreage. So, it's not, you know, just people here that farm their own land. And I've read recently that Dollar General's biggest attraction is selling cigarettes. It is, it has proven to be the biggest attraction, and that's not good for kids. And it's a service that I don't think we need, and I don't think many people in the area do. I thank you, and do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Webb?
Much more than I can answer. I just respectfully request that this be denied.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter that I did, whose name I did not call? Yes, ma'am? Could you come up to the podium, please? And for the record, could we have your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Andrea Spencer. I live at 321 Norman Farm Road, Summerfield, just down from where this is proposed. I'll be brief, because a lot of the same points that I had have been made tonight. I respect your time and everybody's time here tonight. I just wanted to go on record and say a few things. One is that I feel like I speak for a lot of people when I say, we certainly respect somebody's right to sell their land, but this is land that we zoned a certain way for a reason. That's why we're here tonight to discuss whether that should be changed or not. I also appreciate changes to the facade and the effort made by Terramore. However, to be concise, all I can do is try to paint a picture of what this land looks like with respect. I don't know that you've been out there and driven around, and you can hear two acres, but if you go really see, maybe you have and maybe you haven't. But this is a land that has homes near it, a church, horses, cows, donkeys, and a school. It's this two-acre piece of land. And while I think a lot of us are not against development, we support development, it does need to be the right kind of development, and we have a heart for Rockingham County, and that's what we're hoping to see here. And I would ask that you think about that picture of the land that I described, and how small it is, and the beauty, and the people that surround it, including those schoolchildren, and then picture instead what I understand could bring, could be brought here because of Dollar General. 18-wheelers all hours of the night on a non-major road, idling trucks all night long right across the street from residents. I have done research on a lot of articles around Dollar General specifically, even though we're talking about development and what would be right to develop or not, we have Dollar General in this scenario, which allows us to think through some of maybe the most negative outcomes, frankly. They have products, as I have read, that have toxic plastic, expired medicines, electrical items that don't meet safety standards, food offerings that often are expired, and contribute to the kinds of things that contribute to obesity and cancer. So, these are just considerations to make. It's not about whether we should or shouldn't develop, but how we wanna develop and the decisions that we make, and whether this particular piece of land versus other major intersections that we could discuss would, would be the better option or worse option. In closing, I would say that I've also read that there are more dollar stores in general, not just Dollar General, but dollar stores in the United States than Starbucks and McDonald's combined. It's 30,000 of them. This is something I read as recently as yesterday. There was, Dollar General, in fact, was featured on CBS this morning, yesterday morning, ironically. A lot of cities are starting to say no to the kind of saturation that they bring, and I would like Rockingham County to think about that, because we are distinctive, and Dollar General having that kind of saturate, saturation is not distinctive or differentiating for our county. So, again, for development, just want it to be smart and really take into all of the considerations, and not just the proposed tax dollars and somebody's right to sell. Again, that right is dependent on rezoning, that rezoning is dependent on you, and we just look to you as you would. Your job is not easy to make a really thoughtful decision here. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one. You mentioned about selling products related to obesity and cancer. Can you tell me a, a retail store that sells a product that doesn't relate to either one of these?
It does come down to personal choice, sir, you're right. But there have been, there are articles in other areas of the country that state that there have been lawsuits and fines because they have knowingly selling expired things, and then they pay the fine and move on their way. I have not, I can't recite them right now in this forum, but I have links. If that's something I could provide, I would have it to via email to Emily, somebody else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, is there anyone on the list whose name I did not call?
Mr. Chair, if I can make one, one comment.
Sure.
In regard to the petition that was submitted, I just wanted to make, make it clear to the board, upon further researching this matter, there's no specific statutory authorization for protest positions, petitions for counties in the absence of any local ordinance or county statute governing that. So, I would just make the board aware that that should not be considered.
Then we won't consider the petition of signatures that was handed in. Any discussion amongst the board? Questions?
Are you, are you going to give an opportunity for rebuttal?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Forgive me.
Completely understand, Mr. Chair, it's been a long evening. I will try to...
Lot of speakers.
Yes, yes, and I will try to condense them into, into groups and try to keep it as brief as possible. First off, we appreciate everybody who came out here tonight. You know, one of the important things is that community members come out and provide their voice to you, and we take that seriously. I think, you know, we've taken that seriously and evidenced it by the fact that we had previously put forward an application before this board, and then came back subsequent to a denial and revised it to make it stronger, to add conditions, and to lower the zoning classification. So, we take all of these to heart, and we appreciate everybody coming out here. The first one I'd like to address is one that's kind of been broadly safety and general welfare, which is centered largely around traffic safety. We have been in consultation with NC DOT regarding access points, you know, possible traffic improvements, et cetera, and that will be obviously determined in the driveway permit stage. So, while we, we completely understand that there is an issue regarding to traffic and safety in this area, we will kind of rely upon DOT during the driveway permit portion of this development to guide us, and we will work with them and with the county to ensure that traffic moves safely into and out of this site and follow any requirements that they have regarding this site. I will mention that one of the things that's been discussed, and obviously DOT will dictate this regarding the access point, but the location of the access across from the school, that's commonplace to prevent conflict of movements. If you stagger locations, you have somebody turning out, somebody doesn't see it. Having somebody directly across diminishes that likelihood, or at least that's the intent of it in aligning access points. We will, again, work with DOT or the experts in this area to make sure the traffic moves into and out of the area safely. The second concern that we heard voiced here was the product line and the location of it across from the school. Dollar General has a product line that is very diverse, you know, laundry detergent, milk, bread, various food items, various household items. It, it's a diverse product line. It's something that you would see similar to that in a Harris Teeter or Publix, obviously on a smaller scale, but it's not something that is unique just to Dollar General. These are products that you could find in CBSs and Walgreens, convenience stores and other places. So, you know, we believe that this provides options and then provides a service here to the community where people can pop in and, and get certain items. We obviously discourage and want to make, you know, obviously, you guys don't need to know this, but selling beer and cigarettes to under, to underage individuals is illegal in the state of North Carolina. So, you know, we would, we know that DG would commit to following the law there as well, but just wanted to make it known that this is not a unique product line just to Dollar General. The third point is the area. We've heard discussions of oversaturation. I'll hearken back to the point that we made earlier, which is that these stores are meant to serve as kind of a two-and-a-half to three-mile radius area. That's why there, there are a number of them close by, but they're meant to capture existing traffic and to serve existing neighborhoods. They're not meant, meant to be quote-unquote destinations. They're meant to serve the immediate surrounding communities. That's why Dollar General positions them in, in a number of communities so that they can be community-serving stores. The fourth point was truck traffic. I know in talking to Terramore, and Daniel can talk about this more in depth if necessary, is that the trucks will be, have deliveries during normal business hours. So, it's not something where it will be in the middle of the night. They are, those deliveries occur during regular business hours, as you would expect, because they have to be unloaded and brought into the store. In, in terms of smart development, we believe that this is a smart development. We propose an upgraded facade that's consistent with the community that we believe will be an asset to the community by providing a community-based store. And we, we, we believe that we've put forward a strong application and ask that you recommend approval to the county commissioners. Thank you.
Questions, anyone?
I have a question, but it's from Mr. Almazahn again.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Mr. Almazahn, on the, on the lighting plan that you all provided for us, you've got sort of a site plan of what the building will look like.
Sure.
I see an entrance from 158, and then another entrance from Glen Cove Road. What, just to sort of allay some of the fears of the residents back there on Hash Lane, they've got a very good point. And I know there are other Dollar General stores that don't have an entrance on the backside. Would the company consider having one, only one entrance from 158, and not the entrance from the backside, and maybe providing those residents with some buffer trees or some type of...
type of greenery so that they don't see the backside of your store?
Right. I know that, like, in terms of buffering, we, we've got a six-foot fence that was going along the, the perimeter in order that, that we screened that along with groupings of evergreen trees spaced four foot apart. We can definitely look at, at changing that, you know, making it one entrance. I know that we've got the, the main entrance and the, the way that they've got the orientation and the, and the spacing in the parking lot, there's, because you have to do a turnaround within, within the facility, it's, there's only way, one way to do the track, that truck pattern through the front. So, so it's kind of like, it's not laid out to where that somebody could come in the back and still be able to maneuver the truck around. I, I mean, I, I know that somebody could make the argument that somebody will try anything, but all I can say is, is that there's only one, one maneuvering move that we've, that we've anticipated and, and the site is designed for, and that's coming off of 158.
Can I ask, what is the size of your delivery trucks?
Let's see, it's a standard tractor, apparently.
Also, on the, the rendering that you have, the elevation photo that we have, I'm not seeing any parking spaces on the backside of this building, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you don't, you don't anticipate, really, the, so the purpose of the back entrance is to provide the truck and the ability to get in and out of the site?
For, no, this, that was intended on for regular traffic.
Oh, okay.
Just to have access, so, so basically customers coming off of Glencoe Church wouldn't have to come out onto 158, onto, you know, a more heavily trafficked road in order to access the store.
Okay. Okay, so, and that's, that's actually for, the intent is to serve really the, the sites down on Country Oaks Lane?
Correct.
Because if your, if your business model is to serve 2,500 customers, there's probably 100 or 200 in that area?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. That's all my questions.
Let me see, there was one other thing, I know that there was questions about the, the soil conditions, we did have Breck Engineering, that's, that's our engineering firm, come out there and do soil tests, along with, we had Rockingham, Rockingham County do a Perk test out there, and so, we're, we don't have any issues with this oil. Okay.
And just as another question, you might have answered this or not, do you all sell vaping products?
I'm sorry?
Do you all sell vaping products?
Vaping products? I don't know. I don't use them, and if, if they are a standard tobacco product, I don't know why they wouldn't, but I also don't know that they do, so. I'm, I don't know, the convenience stores, do the convenience stores down the street, do they sell vaping, vaping products? I mean, like, if they do, then I, I would assume that they do, I don't want to make it sound like, no, no, they don't, they don't do any of that.
Any questions first, or?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Is a lot of the products in your stores delivered from a distribution center?
Yes, sir.
So therefore you have very little truck traffic, right?
That's correct.
That's right.
I mean, that's why they deliver it on a tractor trailer, because they, they don't make a lot of trips.
I've observed, they must have a good driving record, because I've seen trucks in Mayodan, Stoneville, I mean, just a driveway big enough for a car to get in, but those guys can, can place those trucks, and I was thinking maybe there was service from a distribution rather than every, every mender coming in there all day long.
Yeah, no.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Can I reply to that comment about the vendors? There is one truck, Dollar General truck that, there is a Dollar General truck, eighteen-wheeler that goes in there, I know they go in there. I was at a store recently where the Pepsi-Cola truck couldn't get into the delivery pad in the back, and they were parking, blocking traffic, blocking the parking spots, and if this spot is there, I mean, if this proposed site is where, if this proposed site, the truck is going to go in where the parking spots are in the truck, and block parking into the front entrance, and when the eighteen-wheeler gets turned around, as he said, the turnaround zone, that big eighteen-wheeler again is going to go either right or left, and you're still aligned with the back end of the school exit.
Well, that's, that'd be an issue for DOT, when they get to that portion of determining the location of the driveway. Has nothing to do with the zoning. Discussion? Anybody?
As we've had a lot of discussion about this, I'll be honest with you, I'm dead on the fence. There's, I have some grave concerns about this, but these people have a right to sell their property, and it's a store, I'm, I'm all about.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to either approve or deny this application for rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval and to adopt the statements that are required by General Statute 153A-341.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The application is approved by the planning board and will be subject to final approval by the Rockingham County Commissioners at the January... Carrie, the January 21st meeting of the...
The meeting is January 21st, yes, because it's a Tuesday...
January 21st meeting of the Rockingham County Commissioners.
Monday holiday, yeah.
Do I hear a, well, wait a minute, I see our agenda here, yeah, I'm sorry.
New business, I can't...
We have all new business. Do we have a copy of the 2020 calendar? Okay.
I make a motion, I make a motion, we adopt, no, we, do we adopt, we're adopting?
You, uh...
Adopt what?
Yeah.
The calendar.
The calendar that you saw last...
We saw it last time.
Yes, thank you.
Second? I'll second that motion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Okay, the 2020 meeting calendar has been adopted by the Rockingham County Planning Board. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor. Meeting's adjourned.